Morning everyone, this is Mayor Joe Rudez and today's topic will be two oh one U. School Board referendum. Today I have the privilege of having the school board member, Mr. Maurice Brown, who represents the great village of University Park. And we're going to have just a brief candid conversation on what the referendum means to you, the taxpayers here in University Park. Good morning, Mr. Brown. Thank you for joining me this morning.
Oh, it's a privilege, Mayor. Thank you for having me in the midst of your, your leadership. Thank you so much.
Well, a- 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 and I understand that you've been a little under the weather, so I know it's a little hard right now, but I thank you for your, your dedication to the community. And thank you for just taking some time out, even though you're not feeling well today. That's greatly appreciated, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
No worries. Sometimes it takes those extra sacrifices to achieve what's needed by the people.
Okay, so we're not going to prolong this any further. Mr. Brown, there's a very important referendum coming up at the April sixth, twenty twenty one consolidated election. And a lot of my residents are concerned about, Mayor, what do we do about the referendum? And what does it mean to us as a community? And what I tell them now, here is a unique opportunity for us to get a brand new Coretta Scott School built in the village of University Park. As a part of an IB campus, and the projected location would be at Olmstead, um, Olmstead and Black Hawk and Olmstead and Western, where the current middle school is. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
That is correct, Mayor. That is the optimum site, and it just does volumes to have the existing middle school, which consists of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, coupled with a K through five Coretta Scott King School on the same parcel, basically. I mean, that is ideal. University Park would have a showcase like no other district in this area. So I'm proud to be part of that if it comes to fruition, if the taxpayers agree with me and agree with so many others. As again, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but what I'm want to share with you is information that has been shared with the public. And as a taxpayers, I can share that.
Okay, so I know one of the concerns I say as well, are they actually going to build a school here in University Park? We've been slighted for so long. I said, well, I'll tell you what. Now is the time because there hasn't been any other opportunities that I am aware of, of this magnitude. And we know that the current Coretta Scott School is an older school, and it doesn't even have air conditioning, and the conditions are just not conducive for our young people to have a great learning experience. So the concept of a new school and a new campus and IB campus is fantastic. Built here in University Park, I'm very receptive to the idea, but the residents wanted to have a little more in depth and just know what it means to them about the new school. And they're concerned about taxes. Would you like to share just a small bit about that, Mr. Brown?
Mayor, so obviously, you know, let me go back. Let me just take a step back if I may. Let me go back to twenty thirteen. Twenty thirteen is where the school district had a life safety survey conducted on it. And a life safety survey is mandatory from the state where it's a survey conducted on schools that's ten years old or older, and it's conducted every ten years. So in twenty thirteen, our life safety survey conducted all these inadequacies of the schools. We had pipes at Coretta Scott King to be replaced at the cost of over almost a hundred or one point five million dollars, coupled with all these renovations and all of that. But minimum, we have to address those life safety issues. And we have five years to do that. And we, we actually prioritize those life safety issues from least significant or least critical, actually from most critical to least critical over five year period of time. We addressed the most critical ones. And as far as the pipes are concerned, those were least critical, but nonetheless, they have to be completed. And the regional superintendent has given us a little bit more time to address those least critical ones. Because we were looking, the district were looking to invoke on a major facility plan. And as you know, back in twenty nineteen, the Board of Education was looking to close Coretta Scott King, coupled with Talala, without giving the people a voice. They had a very clever way to borrow money without asking the voters for their input. And the school code says that anytime a building, a school building is being built in a school district, it must ask for the voter's approval. But again, the school board at that point found a little loophole in the process, and they were looking to use that loophole in twenty nineteen. But the voters came out and the residents came out and said, no, we want a voice. And there was an advisory referendum put on the, uh, on the ballot last, what, in twenty nineteen? And it was overwhelmingly approved by the taxpayers in the whole entire district, like eighty percent to say, we want a voice. Anytime schools are going to be built, we want a voice. And here we are in twenty twenty one, and taxpayers are going to have that voice. And going back to CSK, I'm sorry, I don't want to say CSK. I want to say Coretta Scott King. Their names means a lot. Their name is power. It's power. And I'm going to move forward and say Coretta Scott King. So with all these life safety issues with Coretta Scott King and Creed Elementary, almost four million dollars in just life safety issues with Creed Elementary, it behooves the taxpayers to say, you know what, it's, it's, it's really at its wit's end to stop Band-Aids, putting Band-Aids on these schools. So if nothing is done, the school board has to move forward and to address over ten million dollars in life safety issues. That's replacing pipes, very intrusive pervasive repairs throughout the district. And this is no renovation, no air conditioning, no replacing windows, no replacing roofs, no doing driveways or anything like that, which are not considered life safety, but nonetheless, it does have an impact on the learnings of our kids to have these items repaired or replaced.
So bas- so basically, what you're saying is that they were only, it could only be addressed as the pipe replacements, that would be the life safety issue?
That's correct. And we have to do that. We can no longer push, because the regional superintendent, when we told him that we were looking to have a master facility plan to do things that we needed to do to better our learning for our kids with these buildings. He said, okay, we're going to give you time to do it. Then the pandemic hit. We had a plan being worked out there where we had input from all the communities. We had committees, we had finance committees, we had facilities committees working together. And pretty much they came together with a master plan. And I believe it was right in March of April of last year, right when the pandemic hit. And then that just kind of slowed the process down, put a stop on the process. And then we got a, the board, from what my knowledge, the board got wind that they can no longer, they can no longer prolong these life safety issues. And they were looking to move forward only with the life safety issues of ten million dollars. Again, that include placing pipes and CS, uh, Coretta Scott King, Creed Elementary, and other schools. And I, you know, as again,
A Band-Aid, a Band-Aid.
It was only a Band-Aid. Coretta Scott King is basically rated as a D with the structure, overall, overall structure of the school. You know, we have had issues at Coretta Scott King with the waters, pipe, and all of that with Aqua Company. And you know, we have, we got a history of issues throughout the community with the issues with the water. And so when you look at that, when you look at a fifty year old school, and to put Band-Aids on that school, it serves no purpose. It serves no purpose at all. And I can see it from me listening, being, being close to what's going on out there with the process. If this referendum do not pass, again, the board will move forward and to my not, right, and, and, and put air condition in the remaining of the school buildings, air conditioned only, address the life safety problems, and that will be over almost sixty million dollars. And the taxpayers would have to pay that amount regardless. So it's either a choice to build a two new schools, we take care of the issues with Coretta Scott King. Creed has a school that's been, original school was built in nineteen twenty eight. I think it's the time to come together as two communities that has been, it's been, it's been, it's been a lot of division there over the many years. I've been in a taxpayer in, in this district for almost thirty years, and all, there's, it's been a, it's been a gap there. So I think this is the time to kind of unify both communities as well as the whole district. And I think this is a media to do that.
Well, I, I would, and I appreciate those comments, Maurice. I would also say this, in my, uh, I've been here like thirty plus years as well. And I see this as a unique opportunity. I know a lot of residents continuously are concerned about taxes and taxes. But this is an opportunity for us to finally, in my opinion, finally get something for our tax dollars. When we continuously paying taxes into a Coretta Scott King, then that's like a fruitless effort, because as you said, it's like putting good money into continuously old money and old money and old money. And our kids and our children now need something for the future. We have to invest now in the future. And that's why we wanted to have this conversation this morning, because it's important for the residents here in University Park to understand that, yes, as the mayor, I am asking you guys to say yes to the referendum. Vote yes to the referendum, because if we don't get a new school now, I don't know when we're ever going to get a new school built in University Park. It's a unique opportunity. The master plan is very unique. And it's as mu- as Mr. Brown always said, it's an IB campus. Mr. Brown, for a lot of people who are viewing and might not understand what an IB campus is, would you give them a little brief explanation on what we'll be getting here and what an IB campus is?
Yes, IB International Back curricular. That's a proven curriculum that came, I believe, Switzerland over in Europe. And it involves more, the use of the more kids being involved with critical thinking, trying to solve problems by themselves. And it, it's a very unique program, but it has been proven. It has been proven by Coretta Scott King. Coretta Scott King is one of the high achiever in schools in the state. One of the top schools, achieving schools in the county of Will. Uh, they have received awards. So when the, even the sixth grade, the sixth grade students used to be stood alone in the old high school, the old sixth center. And the teachers themselves, and this is part of the life safety thing, when we tried to figure out, the board tried to figure out what to do with the sixth graders, because we had multiple life safety issues in the old high school. So it's either we fix the old high school up or do something with those sixth grade kids and students. And it was decided to move them to the middle school and make them part of the middle school. So that's how we brought the sixth grades. We added that addition, which was uh, really an addition and value, University Park as well as the entire district. So that's how we got the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth grade. And we brought the IB program over to that school. So the middle school. So right now, CSK is IB curriculum. And, or again, forgive me for saying CSK, I gotta give you, is an IB as well as the middle school. You have that right now. And Coretta Scott King is also a magnet school. You would continue to have that title. And a magnet school, it draws outside students from the community. And it's very diverse, and that's how it should be. It should be diverse. And, and, and Coretta Scott King is a model school for diversity, for integration. And you can't ask for anymore. And to have a whole campus, I hate to say this, but that's bragging rights.
You know what? No, you should be proud to say it. And I would be proud to say, as the mayor, I would love to have that in our town. So when we talk about the proposed site, so I've got questions about, well, what are they going to do with our ball fields and things of that nature? We want to touch on that just a little bit?
Yeah, the ball field. And I can tell you this, and that's still work in progress, but I can tell you this, what you have right now, you would have not less, you would have more. If we do the ball fields, they're going to be redid, and it's going to be done better. We do. We re have to shift the football field. We're not taking nothing away. Nothing away. And as I've been told, again, what I see even from the public eyes, the public view of this whole process is, University Park are, will not, will not be given less than what they have, only more, only more.
And that was my main concern.
Yeah, it's work in progress. You know, things are still tentative and, and need to be agree upon it and things of that nature. But I feel pretty good that the board looks like they are going to, what's been shared out there in public, have, have some type of consensus with those officials, as you, Mayor, and, and University Park, to come to a collaborative teamwork process to make this happen where both parties will win. The taxpayers of University Park and the district in its totality.
It, it, it's a win-win. And, and a lot of times, people don't know all the work that has gone into it, the variety of meetings that we've had here in our office with you and the superintendent and the business manager and, and at, at this, uh, school board's office. So there's constantly been work going on. And I'm one of, one of those guys as a mayor. I'm not a Band-Aid kind of guy. I would take my time to teach it and get it right, put a permit fix in the long run. What gives me great excitement regarding the new Coretta Scott is that a brand new school, what it means to me, it means brand new water infrastructure. So there would be both opportunity for contamination to an older system such as the, then the former, you go Coretta Scott King. So that, that, that's good news in, in itself right there, that we know that there'll be new infrastructure for the water system, and that they will have access to the freshest and cleanest water that we can have right now as our current water provider. I'm not a favorite of them, but that's a different story. But one thing for sure is when that new school, if the new school is built, if the residents decide to pass this referendum, which I hope they, they will, then they can know for sure that when those kids go to cover the new Coretta Scott King, they won't have to have water problems. They're going to have new water pipes, brand new infrastructure. And that's another sense of peace that every individual should also have. So that's, it's, it's a win-win. And then people don't know, they're saying, well, what are you going to do with your old Coretta Scott King, Mr. Brown?
Well, this is a great opportunity. And I get the luxury and the privilege to attend. It was a play. My daughter lives in Evergreen Park, but she participated in a play that was housed in Oaklawn. And it was housed in Oaklawn. It was their park district gave the play. And the park district had purchased or was given, I'm not sure how exactly, they obtained an old elementary school in Oaklawn. But it was converted to the youth for the park district there. It was beautiful. It was beautiful. Rooms were segmented to do whatever they needed to do, offices and all of that. And the school was probably older than Coretta Scott King. So this is a unique opportunity for University Park to knock two birds out with one stone, for lack of a better phrase. There, we can, University Park could obtain a new Coretta Scott King school, I, on a, given on an IB campus, magnet school, as well as, there's still life. I think there's a lot of life in Coretta Scott King, the existing building. And that can be used. And we, the school board has not worked at all the kinks and all of that. But the opportunity is there big time for University Park to use the existing Coretta Scott King for activities or however they see was better for the community at large. I just think this a great opportunity. You have, Moni do not have any type of facility for park district, it's the things like that. University Park is lacking those attributes and facilities. Well, University Park and even Creed. So I think this is a win-win situation as, as the board start dissecting all of these things, that it can be a win-win situation for both community, you know, the communities and the school district. So I'm, I'm elated if somehow University Park can get Coretta Scott King, the existing building as part of some type of deal, part of some type of package. And from what I see out there, that can happen. Just the logistics need to be worked out without having an impact on the district and without having a big impact on the community, University Park.
And, and wow, that, that would be a great opportunity, because I'm a, I'm a visionary person. Sometimes I'm way ahead of myself. But I see that Coretta, the old Coretta Scott on Black Hawk in the center of the community, great access to a community center where people can have their community meetings, they can have repasses. There's an opportunity. I know that every school has a kitchen. We can do culinary cooking classes for our seniors, eating healthy, gymnastics, or rowers. There's a variety of things that can be done at that old facility. Uh, trades classes, plumbing, carpentry. We've got, I've got trade group that would like to take some of those classrooms now and upgrade it and renovate it for their apprenticeship class. So there's a massive land behind there. There could be outings and picnics back there. It would be, it would be a win-win for the community. I think it's a win completely.
Yes. And just, let me just reiterate, you know, some of the life safety code violations don't necessarily mean that they are village code violation.
Right, school board, school district.
Exactly. Oh, exactly. Because the school board, they have, they are inspected out of Will, Will County, the regional superintendent office, they send inspector out on an annual basis, not a village inspector. So there's a little different things, you know, that doesn't make it actually say that there should not be any type of inspections or saying that we're going to give, or the district is looking to partnership with you, the school, and you take in and you're not going to do anything. No. In any capacity, the school or the building is going to be safe.
Yeah, yeah. And we would do our very best, because our greatest investment nowadays are in our young people. If we don't invest in our young people now, we will have a lost generation. And the way technology is moving forward now, we need our, to implant, and we need to invest in our young people now. And Neva's on the phone, and she was a former, she worked at the before and after school in Coretta Scott, and she used to always speak about the horrendous conditions and what can we do? Because the ex, the, the academic portfolio was awesome, but the conditions of the building was a great concern. And then when this, uh, water thing hit, it just really highlighted everything. So again, great opportunity. It's still a work in progress, but it's vitally important that we pass this referendum. And I, and I'll tell the residents one thing. I'm a black and white guy. Conversations are good. And in our last meeting at the, at the school, at the superintendent's office, one of the main concerns, I said, I need to have these things in black and white. So if we can get past this referendum, nothing happens until there's a, a actual agreement and it's signed off on all parties. So you know, the conversations is good and the promises are good. But when it comes down to just putting it in black and white, then I'm a hundred percent for it. I know for a fact that we have a very good representative, Mr. and Mr. Brown here, that's working and advocating for the very best of not just University Park, but the whole school district. So, you know, sometimes we have to be a little creative, think outside the box. But don't you dare be afraid to invest in the future, because it's definitely coming.
Absolutely, Mayor. And again, I put myself, I, I guess I want to show empathy. And I, first and foremost, I have no kids in the district. So if I was looking, if I was outside looking in, and when it comes to increasing in taxes, someone like me would be the first to say, hey, my kids are out of school. Why they tax it? Why do I want to do this? But I look at things holistically and say, what's best? You have good schools. It does bring up the vi- uh, the value of your homes. And, and people have went out there on social media and say, look at the grades and all of that. You know, you've got to start chopping away at what's better for our district, what's better for the homeowners, what's better for our kids. And this voting yes does that. Voting no, it does not do that. Voting no, take us three steps back, three steps back. And as a homeowner, if I had a old house about ready to break down, and when I say in my pipes or my, just one component, one major component that I need to fix, what I say to myself, I will just go ahead and spend half the value or a big chunk of the value of my house into fixing that when everything else is falling down. No, I would really consider either moving out or, and purchasing another place, another home or something like that, or building new. And that's kind of the same thing. I would not, if I was living in, or, you know, if, if this was my house, I just would not do that. So it is an investment, and it's an investment that's going to give you a good return on your investment. And that's the community, that's the taxpayers, and that's, and first and foremost, our students. And when the school district posted live that they're looking to keep the portion of the taxes that you're paying towards the debt, the existing debt that the school have, with the inclusion of a new school, if it's voted yes on, that that portion of the taxes that you pay now will remain the same, only longer, but it will remain the same, because I'll be,
Down the line, basically.
Down the line. And, and again, we are, we are a tax district that's heavily dependent on, on taxpayers. And that's just the way it is. I mean, you know, so we do the best we could. The district does the best we could. And we always, we get teachers, we get salaries to pay. We always need to get money from taxpayers. But we try to package the deal. I see the district is trying to package a deal that's less cumbersome, has the le- least impact on the taxpayers, and they can gain the most for a return on their investment. And I see it. And I will vote yes as a taxpayer. I cannot, I cannot advocate yes or no as a board member, but as a taxpayer, I am supporting this referendum a hundred percent.
And, and I'll take that same path as a taxpayer. I'm going to vote yes, because I'm concerned about that. And I know it's the right thing to do. And you know, if this doesn't happen, we don't know when we'll revisit this again.
It would not, it would not, it would not.
Come back.
And that's
My second chance.
Because people are going to say, you just tore down that school, or you tore down the walls, and you replaced new pipes, and you spent two million dollars or whatever. Over in Creed, you tore down those pipes, you replaced boilers, you replaced this, you spent four million dollars. How could you come back to me in two years and say you want a new school? Creed, in our lifetime, Coretta Scott King, in our lifetime, will never have an opportunity to be built new in our lifetime. I cannot see that. I cannot see what taxpayers would say, okay, you just spent, because that's going to happen. Those will be replaced. Those steam furnaces and all of that over in Creed, over in Creed Elementary will be replaced. Ten million dollars will be expended. And, and that's by law. We have to, the, the district have to do that. So and to come back somewhere down the road and say, in the near future, two, three, four years, say now, we ready to build a new school. And where you just spent ten million dollars on replacing pipes and all of that, why would you want? Because everything else is breaking. We still do all of that. That's not going away.
That's a heck of a, that's a heck of a Band-Aid, a Band-Aid that we don't need.
It is, it is. And I, and I would not do that for my house. I would not do that. I don't think any of us would. It's, it's a bad investment to spend so much money on one thing when everything else is breaking.
Okay, well, well, Mr. Brown, I think that we've discussed this quite, uh, I'm trying to think if there's anything that we had, might have left out, that, the questions that I've received or any question that you have received. Um, I mean, it's a great opportunity. The ball field will be replaced. The park will be actually enhanced. It will be a completely safe campus, a brand new water infrastructure, which is a, a heavy concern of mine. Will have access to the cleanest and freshest water that they can have. No, no worries about old air pipe contamination. So it is, it is a win-win for the school, for the school board. And I'm going to get out with my team next week. You'll probably see ten or twenty of us out there going door to door, answering residents' questions and talking about the importance of passing this referendum. This can be a historical event. This can be a momentum for the village of University Park. And, um, this is an opportunity that we cannot afford to pass up. Have a little vision in Proverbs twenty nine eighteen, it states, where there is no Have a little vision in Proverbs twenty nine eighteen that states, where there is no vision, the people shall perish. Am I right, Reverend?
That is.
So from the Reverend to the Deacon, outside of what we do in politics, this is all about the best interest of our communities and working together with the school board, with great members like Maurice. We formed a unique partnership that I don't think that has been there before. So I would love for us to continue bidding on that. I would also love to us to continue with the idea of passing this referendum and building a new Coretta Scott King here in the great village of University Park. So if you have any questions, you can contact me, or you can go to our website. You can contact Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, if you want to share some contact information, please feel free to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for having me, and great pleasure to be a host here with you. You have been nothing but just really, uh, cream of the crop as far as wanting to promote what's best for University Park regarding the referendum, the passing of this referendum. So I really appreciate it because I think you truly see the value of what it brings. Yes, if anyone want to contact me, they can email me at maurice201u, u as in umbrella, at gmail dot com. Again, maurice201u at gmail dot com. And I will answer any questions as relevant to this referendum. As a taxpayer. And, uh, so I'm, I'm grateful. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to point one thing too. I then shared about a facility committee, about a financial committee that involved every, you know, people from every part of the district, University Park, Park Forest, Moni and Crete, that all came together and agreed upon this portion of the referendum. They agreed upon this portion of the referendum. So it's just not University Park, it's just not the school board. It was committees that represented the entire district.
Yeah, I think I just got elected when their committee was just ending up, and I had the opportunity to sit there maybe in the last, last two seconds, which I thought was a great collaboration of everybody. It was like a pizza with a combination of everything. So it really worked out to benefit the residents. And one last point as we close out. Can you imagine what a new school is going to be like in that part of our community? Can you imagine what the property values will escalate? And one thing about taxes, I must say, by, you know, everybody pays taxes, everybody has their ideas and, and thoughts about taxes. But one thing that I know is a main concern, finally, we'll be getting something for our tax dollars. You can see the tax dollars at work. So I'm asking you as your mayor, Joseph B., who there is the third, to say yes to the referendum. Mr. Brown, any last, uh, comments from you?
Well, I, I just echo that. Yes, 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 yes. It's a win-win situation by saying yes. And you would have a much more negative impact by saying no, believe me. And trust me on that, if you never trust me, a politician for anything else, but a taxpayer, again, vote yes for it wholeheartedly.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Mr. Brown. And as we close, look at the cup is always half full. That means we're always, we're close, and we're getting there. Thank you. Have a great day. Thanks again, Maurice. Thanks, Neva. Let's get this message out. Vote yes to the referendum, April sixth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Maurice, take care of yourself.
Thank you, sir. Take care.